Oh, who knows? But.
Johnny, Johnny. Yeah, you got it. You, you.
Say again, please. That garbled.
You, you're.
Hi there. Whoever's microphone is feeding back, try turning down the volume of your speakers, because you're getting a feedback loop between your speakers and your microphone. So if you're on your laptop or your desktop, turn your speakers down.
Yeah, John, I think that I muted doing this, the echo went away. So I think your, uh, your speakers were playing into your microphone a little bit too much.
Okay, I just dropped my speaker volume. I'm not hearing any feedback or echo.
Yeah, if you're the one causing it, then you won't hear it. It's only when you, it's only when other people play through your speakers and then your microphone picks up us on your speakers.
Got it.
But I didn't hear it just now when I talked, so I think you may have knocked it out.
A little bit. Well, I'm going to call them. Call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I'm still hearing feedback. I don't know where that is from.
Yeah, I've been muted, but I am hearing the feedback, the echo. I'm going back to me.
The, the only other one muted was Doreen, so Doreen might be causing it a little bit too, but she'll be muted in a second after roll call.
Okay.
Okay, I think.
All right, again, good evening, everybody. Today is January tenth, twenty twenty-two. This is, uh, City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Doreen, can we have a roll call, please?
President who?
Here.
Vice President Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Brandt.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Dick. Commissioner Miranda.
Present.
Commissioner Quinones. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Shook.
Present.
Commissioner K. Seven. Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. So before I go any further, I would just like to welcome back Commissioner John Roberts, uh, serving his second term as, uh, commissioners. And also, uh, welcoming back Commissioner Asha Miranda, uh, formerly known as alternate. Now she's a former voting member. And I also want to welcome for the very first time Commissioner George Brandt. Welcome. Uh, Commissioner Brandon and I, uh, overlapped briefly at the Transportation Advisory Committee. So welcome, George. Um, okay, so let's move on to communications. So planning commissioners, uh, since our last meeting, uh, in December, well, on December sixth, do you wish to report any meetings you attended? I see none, so let's move on to consideration of minutes. So during circulate a draft minutes from our meeting, uh, on December sixth. If you have an addition, deletions or correction you want to report, please raise your hand. I see none, so I would declare the meeting approved as submitted. All right. So let's move on to the quasi judicial, um, hearing for tonight. So I'm going to open the meeting. This is, uh, Cedar Brook Annexation and Site Development Review, uh, number ZCA twenty twenty-one dash one and SDR twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Um, the applicant is requesting approval to annex approximately two point five three acres into the city of Tiger. The proposal includes a site development review to construct a one hundred and eighty-two bed assisted living facility. Improvements include parking, landscaping, common open space, and other associated site improvements. So I have some required statement that I need to read. The applicable substantive, um, approval criteria are those listed on page one of the staff report available on the City of Tiger website under the Public Hearings and Notices section. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria listed on page one of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation that are believed to be, to apply to the decision. And lastly, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford a decision maker and the parties and an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board appeal based on that issue. Here are some procedure items. Commissioners, if you wish to abstain or declare conflict interest, please raise your hand. I see none. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge any member of planning commissions for bias or conflict interest? Uh, if we ever reach the public testimony section and if you want to challenge any member for bias or conflict interest, please raise, please stay so. Ex parte contacts. Commissioners, if you have made any contact, ex parte contacts, uh, regarding this, uh, matter, which ex parte contacts are oral or written communication about the hearing with persons other than city staff or the city attorney, please raise your hand. I see none. Has any commissioner member visited the side of the proposal? If you have visited the side of proposal, please raise your hand. All right, Commissioner Miranda raised her hand. Anybody else? Nope, all right, thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of commission? Again, if we ever reach the public hearing section, 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 and if you want to challenge the jurisdiction, please stay so. All right, so here's the description of the hearing process. First, the staff will give their staff report. Then the applicant will make their presentation. And after that, we will take public testimony if we reach that this time. So right now, I would like to introduce the staff member. And it is Associate Planner Agnes Lindor to, uh, present the staff report. Good evening, Agnes.
Good evening. Uh, thank you. Um, good evening, commissioners. So my name again is Agnes Lindor, Associate Planner with the City of Tigard. Um, the applicant for the Cedar Brook Annexation and Site Development Review application, um, has requested a continuance of this public hearing, um, to February twenty-eighth at seven P M.
Very well, and the applicant is not on the call right now? I don't see.
I'm not sure. I know that, um, I communicated with him and said that he should attend if, uh, commissioners have questions for him. But I don't see.
Okay, that's fine. All right, commissioners. If you have any question for Agnes, please raise your hand right now. Okay, I see none. So as Agnes reported, applicant has requested that this, um, hearing be continued to February twenty-eighth at seven P M. Would you like to make a motion to continue the hearing? And I will entertain the motion. Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, um. So I'm thinking about how to phrase this. That's, that's kind of where I'm right now. Um. Give me just a second. I, I, I guess I just say I move that we continue this, but I'm going for the number of the, uh, the application number here. That's, that's why I'm hesitant. Give me just a couple of seconds for the, uh, for the number of the the numbers. So. President. President who?
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, okay. I'm, uh, I'm not sure that we actually need a motion. It's not gonna hurt, but, uh, I'm not sure that we need a motion since it's the applicant's, the applicant that's asking for the continuance. They are the, the applicant, and so that's something that's within their purview. So since we have a time certain, I think really what the most important thing is for you to just announce the, the date and the time, and then we don't have to send out another notification.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I, I finally got the numbers, the ZCA.
Would it, would it hurt if we just make a motion just to be safe, Tom?
Doesn't hurt anything, no.
Okay, John, so take your time.
Okay. So I move that we postpone or continue the discussion for the annexations, uh, code ZCA twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 one and the Site Development Review, SDR twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 one to a certain date of February twenty-eighth.
All right, so Commissioner Robert has moved, have, uh, move that we continue the hearing. Uh, case numbers, ZCA twenty twenty-one dash one and SDR twenty twenty-one dash one to a regular meeting that will be held on February twenty-eighth at seven P M. Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Jackson, second. So I see Commissioner Brandon, Commissioner Dick's hands up. Do you have a question? Commissioner Brandt?
Yeah, yes, thanks, Commissioner who. I, I cannot find the link to the OneDrive with all the documents. Um, so if, um, someone could either put that in the chat or send out an email, I'd appreciate that. Um, so I can relook at that. I, I did initially go through most of the files, but I just, uh, that's, that's the ask I have right now. Thank you. Uh, and other than that, um, I'm okay with, uh, a supportive motion of, of continuing this in February.
Okay. So, um, you can always email Doreen for that. Yep.
I'll send you that link. I'll send you that link, John. Thanks, thanks.
So, oh, I do have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Why are the numbers twenty twenty-one and not twenty twenty-two? Or were, I mean, or were they actually, because these were filed in twenty twenty-one and we just happened to be seeing them in twenty twenty-two?
Yes, the application was submitted in twenty twenty-one.
Got it.
Goes by that date that it's submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dick, you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure that you got me down for attendance tonight. And, um, I also, um, have a disclosure about this meeting and the twenty-eighth. Um, my family owned that property since nineteen forty-four, so I have to recuse myself.
Okay, very well.
And there are actions on it. But, um, I'm toggling between two meetings a little bit. I also have a parks meeting tonight, too. So they just kind of hit together here.
Oh, no problem. So, so on twenty-eighth, February twenty-eighth, if you would just, uh, recuse yourself, just remind us that you recuse yourself. That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. And Commissioner K. Seven, welcome.
Yeah, I forgot to, uh, announce. I was a few minutes late. Sorry, Doreen, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, so please, uh, lower your hands right now. All right, thank you. So let's go. So we have a motion fo- uh, fo- forwarded by Commissioner Roberts and second by Commissioner Jackson. So those in favor, I give you a few seconds to find the raise your hand button and please raise your hand. So please go ahead if you in favor of the motion. All right, so those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, please keep your hands up.
Aye.
So I see a hands up, so if the motion passes unanimously. So the motion passed, so the hearing be moved to February twenty-eighth at seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. All right, so let's, uh, move on to other business. Hi, Tom. Hello, Ken.
Ken. Tom Maguire, Assistant Community Development Director. I always remember, have to remember to say that because we have the public watching. Um, so, uh, other business. You've got the, uh, rolling calendar, so you see that we are continuing with our busy schedule through January. I think things will begin to slack off and get to, get to a more ordinary, uh, two meetings a month in February and, and on. Um, and then, of course, January, February, we have, we always have that Monday holiday during the second usual scheduled second meeting, and that always throws chaos into the schedule. So, uh, but, uh, so far, you guys are all being very, uh, good about being available for these extra meetings and meeting date changes, and we really appreciate that since you're all volunteers. I don't have anything other than that, other than, uh, I thought maybe this is the first meeting for, uh, Commissioner Brandt. And so I thought maybe he could introduce himself to all of you and say hello and maybe tell you all a little bit about himself. And, uh, we normally would do that, uh, Commissioner Brandt in a, in a meeting when we're all in the room together, or sometimes, uh, it happens even before, uh, the month in December, before you're even step onto the commission, but, uh, thought I'd give you that chance tonight.
Um, good evening. Um, thank you for, uh, allowing, selecting me to be on this committee. Um, my name is George Brandt. I live here in Tigard, um, with my wife, who actually was born and raised in Tigard, along with her younger brother. Um, I have a son who goes to, uh, Fowler Elementary School. So I've been in the Portland region for about twenty-six years. Uh, my family were, um, some, uh, pioneers and homesteaders back in the eighteen forties and fifties. Um, so we have some family history going back a ways. In fact, we believe that my great grandparents' farmstead used to be at the site that is Fowler Middle School now. Um, and my dad tells stories of when he was a ten, eleven-year-old, uh, putting around in Fannell Creek in his, uh, in his, uh, grandparents' motorboat. So, uh, there's some, there's some history there. Um, I'm also a current student at Portland State University in the Master's Urban and Regional Planning Program. And I am, um, also trying to work on, um, learning software and technology in the planning field. And, um, I was, I had been on the T-TAC for about five years, and I decided that I, uh, would like to give that seat up when this opportunity came along so that I could help, uh, learn more about the planning um, and how it really works in the real world. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually very honored to be part of this group.
Welcome. I think you'll find this interesting, fascinating, and a little fun sometimes.
Welcome, George.
Tell me your mood.
Welcome, George. This is K. Seven.
Welcome, George. This is Darlene Dick.
Welcome, George, from Asha.
Have fun, George. It's Craig. You'll like it.
Welcome.
Okay. Good. Uh, Commissioner who, I noticed that, uh, a couple of hands are up. I don't know if those are questions for me or if that's other commission business, so.
Uh. Commissioner Roberts, do you have a question or you just? There we go. No hands.
No hands, okay. All right, um, so that's all I have. Oh, wait a minute. No, I just thought of something else. I'm sorry. It got you all excited that you were gonna get out of your group. That we are, um, I've been, you've had briefings from, uh, excuse me, Associate Planner Hope Pollard, who's working on the Tigard Maid Project. If you remember, that's the one where we're updating and modernizing our commercial industrial unemployment zones. And, uh, she's, um, moving forward with that rapidly. And we have some kind of interesting policy decisions that we need to make. So we thought it would be a good idea to form our annual, uh, Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting around those policy questions. And that would give you, the Planning Commission, the opportunity to discuss those policy decisions with, directly with the city council. So we are putting that meeting together. I believe Doreen is at March. I can't remember. I think it's March that we're putting that together. So, um, that's something different to look forward to. And in the past, you know, we've had various topics, excuse me, that the commission and the council have either, uh, yeah, I think the tree code questions, that, that got a lot of response and a lot of good discussion. Some of the other ones, maybe not as much as we had hoped. So these policy questions, I think, will be um, very interesting to you. And this particular commission is not shy about uh, expressing opinions and getting in and having a good discussion. So I, I, I'm looking forward to a good policy discussion in March around some issues with the maid project. So with that, I'm, I'm either open to questions or we can adjourn.
Well, George, uh, for George, um, to George, I, I didn't attend that last meeting, maiden, main tiger meeting neither, but it's, it's, uh, available just for streaming. So I'm going, that, that's a good reminder. I'm going to watch that meeting. Um, do you remember when that last meeting was, Tom? The joint meeting with the city council?
Uh, oh, the last meeting with the city council? Hmm, that was a year ago. We usually do it once a year.
But that's, that's when the last presentation was, right? The maiden, the, the.
No, we had a briefing in the fall. I, I'll look into that. I'll ask Hope. Oh, I bet Commissioner Jackson knows.
Yeah, he remembers.
So in, in my book, I have written down that was July twentieth, I think.
July twentieth, okay.
That was the joint meeting, right? Yeah.
Correct.
And then I thought she had also done, uh, another update briefing for you sometime in the fall, but I, I'll, I'll confirm that and I'll, I can send that out by an email.
Okay, so we can.
July twentieth, joint meeting with council, that would be in the archives online for city council meetings.
Okay. So George, you, you and I can watch it before the March meeting, so. All right, thank you, Tom.
The other thing is, uh, all of our major projects have websites up on our, have webpages up on our website. So if you want to look, get a good rundown of what's going on with the Tigard Maid Project or any of our projects, it's all on the webpage.
Um, I have a, just a couple of general housekeeping questions. Um, I guess the first part, does the, the planning commission have its own website where the information is? And two, is there a, a, a roster? And three, how, what's the preferred method of, for communicating with the fellow commissioners on questions or just, uh, topics of interest?
Well, uh, let's see. I can have, uh, Doreen show you how to access the, it's usually, um, the packet. It will, it used to be mailed to you, but now we make the packet available to all the commissioners. Um, depends on the type of case or what's going on. It's usually a week or fifteen days before the hearing. And it's, uh, what is it? It's, um,
like a one drive.
Yeah, one drive, that's what it is. We just switched to new thing. So it's a OneDrive link that you can access the information that way. Uh, let's see, your question number two was.
A roster? I can send him a roster.
Okay, Doreen can send you a roster. And then question number three, that's a trickier question because, uh, the planning commission is a much more formal citizen committee than any of the other ones. Uh, so it's not like the T-TAC or any of the other ones. The planning commission, you, you actually can't really talk to each other outside of meetings. Unless it's, um, you can talk about legislative projects, but anything related to, um, I guess, about anything related to a quasi judicial case, you would not be able to talk about that outside of the hearing itself.
Okay, so that makes me ask if I have a specific question about something I don't understand or I want clarification, is that something I should direct through Doreen or through Tom or through President who? How do, how do we handle those kind of inquiries?
You can send those questions directly to me.
Directly to Tom?
Yep.
Okay, I will make a note of that. Thank you. I, I appreciate that and it helps me so that I don't inundate people's, uh, inboxes. Uh, or, uh, since there's a little bit more, uh, bite to what we do on this committee, I want to make sure that following procedure so we don't get ourselves in trouble. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, as the staff liaison, you can ask any questions to me, especially, uh, uh, anything related to technical questions or whatever. Yeah. Periodically, you'll get a poll question, maybe from Doreen when she asks about dates or, uh, we'll send things out to all the commissioners about training opportunities or things like that, so. Yeah, we can't even, uh, we can't even go down to, uh, well, in the days when we could meet together, we couldn't even go down to the, the local watering hole and, uh, have a discussion about a project if there were four or more of us there, because then it's, we have to have a public hearing. We have to notify.
We need to set up a, a Planning Commission Alumni Association or something.
Yeah.
My only other advice is make sure you've got good reading glasses. There is a ton of material and it is fascinating. Yeah, I, um, reading through the Cedar Brook initial, though through, I, I have a list of questions already of, 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 um, based on the applicant, what their, their feedback and what the, what the commission was, uh, what the permits require. So I, that's what I, that's what I was curious, like, how, how do I ask these questions without, um, violating procedure or policy? So, uh, maybe I'll take that offline with, with Tom later, uh, and send him my questions. Uh, so maybe I can understand better how, if I can ask those questions in the session or how to ask those questions in the session.
Exactly. You can, yeah, just, you can send me all the questions and I will, I can tell you, there might be some that I can answer than others that you might want to. There is a question. You, during a planning commission hearing of this type, you will have, each planning commissioner gets a chance to ask questions of the staff, the applicant, anyone in the public who testifies. So some of your questions, you could reserve for that, but send them to me and I'll, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Very exciting.
All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody. The meeting is adjourned. See you in two weeks.
Good night. Thank you. Good morning, guys.
Good night.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye, bye.
Good night.
Good night.